Special meeting of WPCA, you want to call that the order?
Yes, I'd like to call it order. Water Pollution Control Authority Board.
Okay, so first thing we do is pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just remind everybody to please mute your cell phones. And I think, do you have your roll call or you all set with? Because I think we'd like to just go around the room and have everybody introduce themselves.
Okay, yeah, no, we've not done roll calls, so we've only got...
Hello, everybody, I'm Doug Nation.
Okay.
Howard.
Joe Roddy.
Mike Lane.
Okay, Mike is the Chair of the WPCA.
Alan Cavignero.
Kevin Foley.
Steve Wagner.
Stephanie Dexter.
Paul Bernstein.
Bob Vitery.
Art Passakonis.
Duspena Bogansky.
Okay, and is Commissioner LeBlanc going to be here tonight, do you know?
Haven't heard otherwise.
Since we have one absent, Commissioner LeBlanc, I'm going to seat Commissioner Bazansky. Bazansky, for him, I don't know if we're going to vote on anything other than adjourning, but... Do you need to seat any alternates?
I've not met you before, are you a regular member now?
I guess I am.
Okay, I was not aware of that. So we have, we have four, so move a corner.
All right, so also I think we should have the people sitting in the back row say hello who they are and all.
I'm Glenn Chalder from Planet Metrics, I'm working with SLAM on the POCD.
My name's Slammy.
Hi, Pat Gallagher, I'm with SLAM as well, I'm one of the consultants working on the POCD as well.
I'm Michelle LeBlanc, Director of Planning.
I'm Nancy Superintendent of Pollution Control.
I'm Logan Lewis, Liaison to WPCA.
I'm Carolyn Carey, Liaison to Planning.
Okay, well, welcome, everybody. So now we can move into our new business, which is a discussion regarding the plan of conservation and development with our consultant. So if you maybe just say, well, you've got a whole nice presentation which everybody has, right? So that probably covers what I was going to ask you to do.
Sounds good, thank you, everybody, for doing this in the evening to talk about what we've designated as our special focus area for the plan of conservation and development. We're listing this as an opportunity to get you all in the room, because this doesn't happen very often, and talk about how we can better coordinate our land use policy and sewer service area. And then to cap us off, we'll talk a little bit about PA 490, which is a conservation strategy. And we're also going to try to dovetail, as we're talking about land use and sewer policy, which is more development focused. Let's look also at some more conservation policies and see if we can better align that as well. So not only are we trying to steer development to where there's infrastructure and where we want infrastructure to expand, but also conserving lands in certain parts of town. So for those of you, this is your first POCD process or have not been following us along, the POCD is a state requirement, every town has to develop and update its plan of conservation and development every 10 years. South Windsor's last plan was adopted back in 2013, so we are right at the 10-year mark, which is why we're all here today. It's really a guide and advisory document that sets the overall vision for the town. And while it's primarily used for land use boards and commissions, it can also take a look at other areas that are outside of the PCC's control, notably infrastructure, economic development strategies, community facilities, and the like. So one of the new requirements since the last plan was adopted is the state now requires your POCD to have a sewer plan, so showing the existing sewer service areas, any areas where sewers may be expanded, and also identify areas where you may want to avoid sewers in the future as well. So this is really one of the reasons why we're all here today. This is a new requirement that was not around during your last POCD update 10 years ago. So we've been at this process for about 12 months. We have gone through several different meetings with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they're focused around what we're calling different plan elements. So we had roundtable workshops with the commission on conservation strategies, sustainability strategies, development strategies, and infrastructure strategies. And after we went through the four planning elements, we had a discussion on, you know, if we were to focus our efforts on one area of the plan, what would that plan be? Or what would that area be? And ultimately, we decided on what we're dubbing our growth management strategy, which is better coordination and alignment of various land use, infrastructure, and conservation goals. And so looking at our land use map and our sewer service map, that was one area where we felt that it was worth a discussion to see if we can not only better align land use policy with sewer areas, but also create clear sewer areas for the WPCA as you do your planning work and review land use applications. So to start, we'll just take a look at our existing sewer service area map that Tony shared with me a few months ago. This is a parcel-based approach, and it's the first time I've seen a parcel-based sewer map in my 10 years or so being a planning consultant in Connecticut. And I'll go through some of the examples of how other communities do it, and we'll have some discussion on whether you all think that that's a good direction for South Windsor to move. So some of the challenges that I see with the parcel-based approach is that we have some properties that maybe front a sewer line that are not consistently classified. You may have some that are blue or brown on your map, which is existing or future sewer areas. And then you may have one right next door that's green, or a conservation area, or more of a sewer avoidance area. I know you all discussed, or the POCD folks have discussed this recently, on Oakland Road, where we had a collection of properties owned by the same property owner, some were in the sewer service area, some were not. So that's one of the challenges with the parcel-based approach, is that we don't have consistency from property to property. Another component of your parcel-based approach is that no open space lands are currently identified as existing or future sewer areas. And there's a couple of challenges with that. One, there may be a time in the future where you may look to add amenities to whatever your open space properties, bathrooms or something. And if it's not in the sewer area, then you're going to have to go through the whole process of amending your map before going forward with a land use application. And then as we've discussed with the PCC during this process, we don't really have a consistent definition of what open space is. And so the area that I've circled on the map here, just to the west of Clark Street, is actually utility right-of-way. Some owned by EverSource, some privately owned, all these are open space in the purposes of your sewer map. And then the third challenge we see, and perhaps one of the areas that we'll focus most on tonight, is areas where we have very large and irregularly shaped lots. And the parcel-based approach basically means a single parcel has one designation. And so, for example, this is a property here just to the south of the Public Works Facility. Long parcel, probably over a half mile long, it's all considered sewer service area. No sewer today, but it could be in the future. We also encounter this in the Main Street corridor, where we have a lot of long lots fronting Main Street that go several hundred feet back. And so I think one of the questions is going to be, are those areas, areas where we want to see sewer expanded? Should a land use application come forward or not? So to go through some of the other examples that we've seen, this is an example from Sims-Birratt's community that Glenn's worked on, or in for their comprehensive plan. This is a good example of just a generalized map where it aligns pretty well with zoning. So in green here is their sewer service area. Not all areas within their sewer service area have sewer. They have neighborhoods that have no sewer infrastructure at all, which could be future sewer growth areas. And what you'll notice if we overlay this sewer area with their zoning map is that it encompasses all of their commercial and industrial zones, and with a handful of exceptions, all of their higher-density residential zones. So typically, if you have public water, you're looking at less than a half acre is typically desirable for sewer. If you don't have public water and you have well, typically two acres is a more appropriate minimum lot size. And these areas outside of the sewer service map, you'll notice, is R40, R80, R160. So that's your half-acre, acre, and two-acre zoning. So we have pretty good alignment between our sewer area map and our land use policy and zoning map. Another example is Berlin. This again is their sewer map on the left, you'll see in blue. What's a little different with them is they've actually identified, or differentiated between existing sewer areas and sewer growth areas. So you have kind of your dark blues where sewers are today, your light blues are where sewers may expand in the future. And if we overlay that with their land use policy map or their future land use plan, again, we see some pretty good coordination between the two, where it encompasses all of our industrial, commercial zones, all of our higher-density residential zones. And then these light green areas outside of the sewer area are large, are what they deem rural residential, so onsite septic. And the last example I'll give, and I think this is a particularly relevant one, when we're talking about Main Street, is Hebron. And Hebron has two small sewer sub-areas, one in their town center and one around Amstons Lake, which has small minimum lot sizes relative to everywhere else in town. And these two sewer areas are connected. And what's unique here is that only structures within about 150 to 250 feet of the connector main can connect into the sewer system. So if someone comes in along this connector main and wants to build a subdivision, the subdivision isn't allowed to connect, because it's outside of the 150 to 250-foot buffer around the sewer main. So this is a policy that we'd like to discuss for the Main Street area in particular, to see if that's an approach that would make sense here, especially if we're talking about development, or potential development on interior lots. Any questions so far? Keep rolling. So one potential alternative approach that we've discussed with the PCC, I believe Steve had shared it with you at one of your meetings this fall, is to potentially create a more generalized sewer map, more like those three examples that we just went through, that better aligns with zoning and creates clear policy areas, both for the PCC as they do review land use applications, and for WPCA and property owners, so that we don't have to constantly be doing these little map amendments on a parcel-by-parcel basis. And so the way that we had looked at it, we initially discussed this in the fall, was looking at kind of three different area, or three different policy areas that we could incorporate into your sewer map. So your primary sewer service area are areas that encompass your commercial industrial zones, your more dense single-family zones, as well as your multifamily zones, so any apartments or condominiums. Those may all make sense from a sewer standpoint, and the density justifies the infrastructure. And so this is an area where we'd want to encourage existing properties that aren't yet connected to the system to tie in when that time comes. Complete sewer line extensions as needed. I know you guys have done one recently on Ellington Road. That's always been an area that's been in your primary sewer area, even if you haven't necessarily called it that. And then should a new development come in, whether that be a residential subdivision, industrial building, or a retail business, they would all be required to connect a sewer. The second area is kind of our in-between area, what I'll call our limited sewer service area. So these are lower-density residential zones where, if you were building the infrastructure today, the density may not justify the sewer infrastructure that's there. Oftentimes, these are areas where the sewer line simply needs to move from the higher-density zones to the water pollution control facility. And the zoning itself does support onsite septic in most cases. So this is an area where some potential policies would be to perhaps establish a buffer or an offset policy like Hebron does that says structures within a certain number of feet of the existing sewer line can connect. But if you're a new development coming in and you're not within 150, 250 feet, whatever that offset is, you have to build onsite septic for those lots. And of course, with everything, there's always exceptions that may need to be made. Sometimes sewers need to be extended for public health purposes. If you have an area with, you know, half, or with one-acre lots, but soils aren't great, you may need to extend it to serve existing development for public health purposes. So this is an area where we want to discuss tonight. And then lastly is conservation areas which are on your existing parcel-based map. And in general, these align well with your rural density residential zones, so areas that have one acre or more minimum lot size, and currently do not have sewer service. And so these are areas where we want to avoid sewer expansions. New development should be designed with onsite septic. And we may want to talk about some exceptions, like if you build an open space subdivision, do you maybe fall into the yellow, do we maybe allow an exception for open space subdivisions? So that can be something we can talk through tonight as well. Any questions on these three designations, and maybe a little easier once we see them kind of laid out on a map?
I guess I had to, why the open space exception?
So that would be more for, I would say, a yellow area that falls outside of the buffer. So let's say you have, right now, your zoning regulations don't require open space subdivisions. They are desirable in certain locations. So we could, we could say, for example, if you're in a rural area, you can do your conventional subdivision with your, you know, your conventional open space set aside. Or you can do an open space subdivision with a greater open space set aside, and in exchange, you know, you can be granted an exception to the sewer policy to support the smaller lots and the greater amount of area that's preserved for open space. Not, not a, you know, something that I've seen elsewhere that I'm aware of, Glenn. I don't know if you can come, come across that at all?
Well, I'm going to watch, listen to the conversation on the phone and see.
Yeah, so that's just an option to talk about as an incentive for open space subdivisions. We've also talked about changing the language in your zoning regulations, rather than it be a, you know, an either-or, you can do conventional or open space, strengthen the language that says it's open space subdivision unless we give you a waiver for certain reasons. So that could be an alternative approach as well.
If you have a required open space subdivision, if it's part of the open space master plan as an identified property, then it triggers you having the option of requiring.
Okay.
So I thought it would be helpful to overlay your existing sewer lines with your existing zoning. So this map here, the green lines show roads with existing sewer, or maybe a couple areas that have been added in the last couple of years that aren't on this map. And then over with that are our zoning districts, with our purples being industrial, our yellows and oranges being residential, and our commercial districts being red. And the more intense colors are our higher-density zones. And I've generalized this into two categories on this map here, what I'm calling our higher-density zones. So that's our business industrial zones, multifamily residential zones, and our moderate-to-high-density single-family zones, so less than an acre minimum lot size. And the good news is that, if we look at those light green areas on the map, almost all of those areas are currently served by sewer, which is great. So there's already good alignment with those areas. If we look at the light yellow zones, we have, and this, I think, is going to be the focus of most of our conversations tonight, we have low-density zones that don't have sewer infrastructure. So if we look at Barber Hill Road, Needawerford Road, they have no sewer lines. Same with the southern part of Main Street, south of Pleasant Valley Road. But then we have other areas that are lower density that do have sewer lines. And so I think that one of the big conversations tonight is going to be, what is the policy for those areas going to be going forward? So back when we presented in the fall, we had created a map showing those three tiers, our primary sewer service area, our more limited sewer area, which was just a buffer around existing sewer lines in low-density zones, and then our conservation areas. Having looked at the map and infrastructure a little more over the last couple of weeks, you have a lot of kind of smaller pockets of low-density zones that are already entirely sewered. And I felt that that could be generalized into our primary sewer service area. So this is an area where, you know, it encompasses all those higher-intensity zones, and then lower-density zones that are either already served or are surrounded by sewer infrastructure. And so I think one of the discussion items tonight, and we'll go through all these other sub-areas one by one, so I think they warrant their own discussion, is should this area generally be considered part of the town's primary sewer service area? Where, you know, any new development that would come in, we would look to connect them to the sewer system. And this, this is the generalized approach. So maybe another question, especially for the WPCA folks, is what are your thoughts on the generalized approach versus the parcel-based approach? Do you see it as potentially working for you all? Do you have some reservations?
Just my, from my own personal opinion, I think we're going to have to go through this a little bit more to kind of answer that question. I s, I mean, I see this as a reasonable thing to be doing, high level. But I'd like to understand some of the subtleties here a little bit more as we go through.
Sure, yep, and this is not something that we're planning on taking action on. This is something that we're trying to start the discussion. So any, any additional information you need, or questions that arise, you know, even if you don't have, if you need either way, information that would help you make a decision either way, let us know. I'll work with staff to see what, maybe fill all those data gaps for you.
One question I did have, so why was it originally set up as partial, individual parcel-based rather than...
Michelle, do you know the history there?
Yeah, honestly, it was the limitation of the mapping at the time. You know, it goes back to probably 2009, I think. And when you did your GIS mapping, then you picked parcels and it lit the whole parcel up, so that's really the origin of it. Interesting. And we were under a position back then where you had to create a map for DEP to look at and have. So we, you know, it was pieced together at that time based on properties that were sewered already. And so like he said, like on Main Street, if you had a sewer and you highlight it, the whole thing, all the way to Route 5 would get lit. You know, so it really, did not really serve a good purpose from a land use policy perspective because of that.
So then prior to, just to follow up on that, prior to 2009, there was basically no map?
It wasn't, it wasn't, it was a map that was hand-drawn. It wasn't done through GIS mapping where you, the computerized mapping and all, yeah. And then you had sort of user area, you know, all those different, I think like different sewer areas that were shown, and yeah.
Okay.
This might be a stupid question, but should the sewer and the water be kind of like hand-in-hand a little on this whole thing? Like getting public water, contamination wells, sewer coming from other properties, is that, do they go hand-in-hand?
So generally, mo, most of the areas that have sewer service do have water service. The, the challenging part is that the town doesn't own the infrastructure the same way that you do for sewer. So your influence over policy is more advisory, I would say. But in general, you know, the same can be said about water service. I think our higher-intensity zones, we want to have public water service as well. Any other thoughts or comments on this before we get into some of the detailed discussion? All right, so I thought it would be kind of a useful exercise to just overlay the parcel-based map with the hypothetical primary sewer area. We have our, our blue is our existing sewer connections, our brown is future sewer connections, and our green is our conservation areas. And there is a decent amount of conservation area in what we're calling our prime, our conceptual sewer area here. We did a little bit of an overlay analysis. So the neon green here is protected open space. So that's town open space land, much of that was acquired as part of the subdivision process. Town parks, Land Trust properties, any state properties. It doesn't include utility land or public Act 490 land. The other areas are utility corridors, which are kind of in this purplish-red. Several of those properties are conservation areas, unlikely to be developed or sewered. And there were a few areas where we did have some clusters of properties that aren't currently in your existing or future sewer parcel-based approach areas. We have about 20 properties on Ellington Road here. Cross streets here. In the northeast corner of town, we have two areas on Oakland Road. I believe you've already taken action on the one closer to town center, which has about five new properties. And then another cluster on Ellington Road in the southwestern corner of town. And then a handful of interior lots that are scattered throughout. So from a capacity standpoint, we don't see any major areas that aren't already in your, either existing or future sewer map that are being added here outside these couple of dozen lots.
Was it all residential or the commercial?
All of your commercial and industrial zones, properties, I believe, are already in your existing or future sewer classification. I didn't come across any, there, there may be some, but there wasn't like a giant cluster or anything like that.
So these are all residential?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
22 Wheeler is a commercial zone, so we've just had a discussion about that at our last meeting. So it's already marked as a sewer area.
And then we have a couple of other areas that didn't seem as black and white that we thought warranted individual discussion. And so we'll go through each of these. The Main Street corner, I think, is one of the more important areas. This has been come up in our conversations, you know, in the survey, the workshops, discussions with the PCC, that this is a, you know, the primary area for conservation. It's, I think people are, are concerned about the pace of farmland loss over the last decade. And Main Street's really kind of the last stronghold where we have, you know, large agricultural holdings and primary where we have a lot of inconsistency in the sewer policy, given the size of the lots. As Michelle mentioned before, we have some areas where the lot goes all the way from Main Street to Route 5, and so the whole property is considered a sewer area. So if someone were to come in and propose a subdivision on that property, would it be, would they be allowed to connect to the sewer or not? And is it desirable to have that? Because we know that developers often see access to sewer service as more beneficial than an area where they'd have to do onsite septic. So it certainly is an incentive. It makes the land more attractive to development if they have access to sewer. So we want to talk through, you know, is it an area where we maybe want to pull back policy a little bit or not? So right now, we have sewer service north of Pleasant Valley Road. We have connections on some of our cross streets, but not all. And most properties that are currently on the sewer line are connected with, you know, a handful of properties still on septic that may connect at some point in the future. And largely, these lines serve to get the sewers from the higher-density zones to the water pollution control facility. And so one of the questions is, should sewer service extensions be allowed to support development on the interior portions of the lots? So if someone were to come in, let's say they have property between Main Street and Route 5, they want to put in a subdivision, should they be allowed to connect to the sewer system? Or is it more reflective of your respective policies to have them do onsite septic? And then currently, we have no sewer service south of Pleasant Valley Road, except for the Mobile Home Park right on the East Hartford line. Tony, does that go to East Hartford, to MDC?
East Hartford, yeah.
Okay, so that's currently the exception. And so just to verify that we want to maintain that area as a conservation area. It will be kind of two areas, two things to discuss for this evening. So any, any thoughts on Main Street?
Yeah. Just some general basic questions.
I, I don't have any background in this area, so these might be real basic. When you're looking at areas to expand the sewer system, what's the relevance of proximity to existing system? Number one, and number two, pays for it? Is it the town, the state, the residents? How, how does that all work?
Yeah, so typically sewer infrastructure is, is built through what's called a benefit assessment. Is that consistent with what you guys do, Tony? Where essentially, the person that wants it pays for it. And the only exceptions being occasionally towns will go after grants. Steep grants are, are one of the funding sources where they may build it, usually to support commercial or industrial development, if it's not cost-effective for a private entity to it. But I've not seen that, I've not seen grants for sewer service for, you know, lower-density residential users. But this would be, the, the new development would pay for it if they wanted an extension. But then the town would also be responsible for the long-term maintenance of the sewer line and any, any improvements thereafter.
So I think you're asking, does, do the planning and zoning members as planners want to discourage housing development a certain distance away from the Main Street? Or do we want to say, that'd be great if someone wants to come in and build a subdivision on that or any of those other properties?
Actually, this I think will be a good illustration of, of some of the options. And maybe we can discuss this from a land use policy standpoint first and then follow up with the WPCA folks. So to your point, Steve, I think that, that sums it up nicely. Right now, we have, we have kind of a, the map is inconsistent in terms of what you can do in the Main Street corridor. So I think our two options is, you know, obviously you can maintain the parcel-based approach. We can establish an offset where we say, okay, existing properties that front Main Street and structures, you know, going back a certain distance can connect. But if you want to build a new subdivision back here on some of these agricultural fields, you're, you're not in a priority area for sewer. The other option would be, let's make the whole area sewer area. If a new subdivision were to come in on an interior agricultural lot, they're in the sewer area, they can connect. So which of those, which of these options do you feel best aligns with your land use vision as a commission?
Maybe I ought to let the members speak, and we'll start with Commissioner Podolsky.
Well, I, I don't really have a lot of comments. I think I would just probably, I would be very cautious about bringing more developments, right? With everything else we're kind of dealing with right now, so I, I, I don't know. I guess where my mind's going to right now.
Yeah, um, I'm leaning towards the middle choice, which is the limited sewer area. I heard, I believe it was Hebron, might have been Hebron, 150 to 250 feet. And some of your examples say like up to 500 feet. I just want to be careful that our number is consistent and not necessarily arbitrary. And on the map on page 15, it shows a lot of blue areas. And it doesn't include any, like, what was the other area? The, what'd you call it, like a, a flex area or?
Oh, the limited sewer area?
Yeah, that, if for Main Street, that would be the left green sewer line.
Yeah.
That signifies Main Street. So something like that, I think, should be in a limited zone. And, you know, just for discussion purposes, I would say probably 200 feet from the, or 250 feet from the center. Just so we have something to go by or to discuss.
I think one of the challenges with using a consistent number is that we have a couple of properties where we do have rear, rear development. I think the, um, the old assisted living facility that's being redeveloped into senior housing, that's probably beyond a buffer that you'd set because it's kind of setback from the road. So a, a consistent buffer may be a good starting point, but you may have to make a couple of exceptions for existing development, should, for example, that ever back or redeveloped.
Yeah, is that one a sewer property or is, okay?
Yeah.
Is that one's currently in the process of being developed?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And something like that, I guess, would just be grandfathered in, correct?
It comes down to, you know, any existing property that's connected to sewer certainly would be sewer. The question would become, let's say it has sewer and it's in a conservation area and it gets redeveloped, then it kind of muddies the waters a little bit. So it's, it'll, it would ultimately be a, a decision, you know, by the WPCA and PDC of kind of administratively, does it make sense to just say, you know, sewer, you're, you're kind of grandfathered into our sewer, our limited sewer area, but certainly you can't capture any more greenfield, you know, developments around you.
Because as you look at that picture there, it's pretty apparent that, say, 90% of the properties on Main Street frontage have a sewer connection at the present time. So if we could be as consistent as possible, I think that's important.
Commissioner Terry?
No, I, I agree with what Commissioner Escobar was saying because I think that, you know, like you said, if you've already got 90% of it in there, I think, like he was saying, the limited sewer service option, at least, I say, I think is, is a, a point to, to begin at right now and to at least to get consistency within the, uh, within the package. But I think, you know, going beyond that as an initial step, I think, is a little bit more than we want to do. I think at least doing something like that to see if it, if it has the consistency we're looking for and defendability is the wrong word, but the, the ability to follow up on it and, and, you know, keep it under control, I think more, makes more sense. But at this point, I, I don't think I would favor going beyond something like that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that I understand the issue well enough to have a considered opinion at this point. But, so let me ask these questions. Am I understanding that if a developer were to come in and get approved for a subdivision, the developer would be responsible for the cost of the sewer? If it's an area that is just existing residential, that the homeowners are responsible for the cost?
Yep, for a lot, sewer lateral, yeah.
I'm, this, I may be going off on a tangent here, but I'm guessing in that kind of situation, they would come to the Planning and Zoning Commission with an application because I assume the town has to approve the contractor, those kinds of things. I know I'm getting into weeds here, but just trying to understand how all this works.
Yeah, so WPCA has, and, and WPCF has their own process. If you're connecting into the sewer line, you have to go through the approval process like you would for, you know, a land use application. I will say, just to clarify, a development can come in and put sewers in only if they're in the sewer area.
Right, yeah, of course.
If a developer comes in and they're outside of it, then kind of your options are you, you either go through the amendment process with WPCA and say, I want to change the map to make my property blue. Or, which isn't good policy to be doing that a lot. You know, there's always exceptions, especially when you have a parcel-based approach where there may just be some areas where, when the map was being developed, you know, certain properties were left off and we don't know the reason why. So I certainly see the, the reason why we have to have amendments. But for the areas that do it on a more generalized, in a more generalized manner, typically the sewer area is not revised very often, if, if ever, because the area's the area. So I think the question is, for some of these areas where we're not quite sure if you can put a sewer line in or not, do we want to even give a developer an option of putting in sewer? Or do we just want to say, nope, we want to, we, this area is a conservation priority. If you want to do a subdivision, you have to do it with, with onsite septic, which would be a disincentive for them.
So, so if we're voting or just taking a straw poll, I would probably favor like these two folks, the middle one, because that seems to give us the most flexibility and options.
And it's also, it makes sense if you have the infrastructure there.
Right.
Having folks that have access to it connect is, is more users that are paying for the common, you know, maintenance of the system. So just from a financial standpoint, I think that, that makes a lot of sense.
Mr. Doster.
Well, when I look at Main Street, I look at the houses that are right on the road, right? And then I look at these big, long tracts of land that go up to Route Five. Not necessarily to the river as much, but that Route Five, all those little blue strips. So whoever lives in the house on the road may or may not actually own that land to Route Five. I, I'm not sure. So to discourage development of those tracts, I'm, I'm in favor of making it a non-s sewer area because if that's going to add cost to their, to their proposal, then, you know, maybe that's a good thing. What I don't understand though is you said that there are sewer lines going toward the plant on Viber. And if I bought a property that didn't have a sewer connection and the, and the pipe was like five feet off, you know, off my property line, what, what, how do we explain that? That, that, that it's there, but I can't connect into it? Am I simplifying that?
Yes, I think that's the benefit of having the generalized areas where hopefully that is avoided. You know, gen- I think generally a good policy is if you, if your property fronts the sewer line and as long as you don't have any capacity concerns, it's good policy to say you can connect. The only exception would be if you don't have, you know, if you, if you're running out of capacity at a pump station or something like that, maybe say, okay, single-family home, maybe, you know, maybe we'll reserve this for commercial development or something.
Okay, okay.
So the generalized approach, I think, would help solve that where we wouldn't have kind of an orphan parcel. Like you'll notice some of these ones on Viber Road are green, even though they're right across from the water pollution control facility.
Right, that's true. And then just my last thought, as it is near the river and it is farmland, I'm sure there's soil contaminants. I'm sure there's things that may play into the answer. And I'm not sure what that means, but most of all, these properties have city water, I'm guessing?
Yes.
And that's the important part when it comes to.
Yeah, like if you have, if you have well and septic, typically you'll need larger lot sizes than if you have septic and city water.
Okay.
Mr. Pauli?
Um, I'm in favor of the middle example there and limiting to, say, 150 feet. And stay kind of what, what they did in Hebron area. One question I have, so on one of these larger tracts of land, if a developer came in, their main trunk line that they'd have to tap into on Main, if they fell within, say if we put a number of 200 on it, right, 200 feet. If, if they brought that line in at 200 feet, would that give them the right to anything else that could be gravity fed into that line? Or does it, it is only for whatever dwelling falls within the 200?
Yeah, so that, that's a great point. And in Hebron, it was only structures within the, um, the area could connect. And that's something that certainly would have to be reflected in, you know, the language that goes along with the map.
Then, then I would, I would say, based on Main Street, I would stay to 150 feet, except for those structures such as the old convalescent home or the new facility that, you know, whatever's there now is grandfathered in.
Commissioner Cavenero?
Yeah, I'll keep it simple. I agree with everything said before me. The, the middle one, limited sewer, uh, sewer, sewer service option.
Before I pass it on to the WPCA members, um, the distance, the 150 feet, 250, is that, that's a measurement from where to where?
It's usually, it's so, in Hebron, it, it varied. They didn't use a consistent, they didn't use a consistent distance, but that was measured from the sewer line, uh, either side.
The sewer line to what?
So it would be 250 feet to the, you know, west of the sewer line and 150 feet to the east of the sewer line. Those structures could connect.
So I mean, is it the, is it the edge of the building or is it all the way around back where they actually connect? Or, you know?
I think generally, I don't know if they had a case while I was, while I was the town planner there where it was partially in or out. I think, I think it was if the structure is, is in.
Entirely.
I don't think it was entirely, I think it was, it was open to interpretation. And I think, speaking for myself and some of the other staff there, I think they were, they were taking a more liberal interpretation where if you were in a structure that's part in, part out, you're in.
I, I would think wherever the structure is, if the sewer pipe was into the structure there, that structure could.
I think I would, I would favor that also. The other thing on, by the way, these town councilors, thanks for coming. Have another meeting they might want to go to. Losing my train of thought here. Yeah, existing buildings along Main Street that are not connected, I would want to check and make sure that any limit we set includes them.
As being able to connect.
As being able to be connected.
To make it consistent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if it's, if it needs to be 180 feet because one of the buildings is a little further back, you know, whatever.
And I think that if I'm understanding correctly, the intent is more, let's, let's discourage development of undeveloped land, right?
That's right.
Let's allow existing structures to connect. Is that, am I hearing that correctly?
In fact, we could write that in as a paragraph in, in your regulation, which would say just that.
And the last, last thing before we pass it forward, Steve, if you don't mind, is, and I, I didn't think there would be a lot of discussion on it, but just to verify, are we in, are we, we're not in favor of extending sewers south on Main Street from Pleasant Valley Road, correct?
Right.
Right now, there's no sewer south of Pleasant Valley.
That's where I am.
That's where I am.
I think I got a cap out there that says sewer on it, but I don't know if it does anything.
Okay, um, let's pass on to our WPCA members.
Why would you, just for curiosity, why, why wouldn't, what would be the reason you wouldn't extend it? Not that it's going to matter to me.
Because the density doesn't support the cost of the infrastructure. Plus the incentive, it provides an additional incentive to develop undeveloped land.
There's another thing too, I mean, septic has an advantage of replenishing the aquifer. All, all the water that we take out of wells and put into these houses goes into the Connecticut River instead of back into the aquifer. So a whole lot of our land design, of all the new industrial facilities, they're trying very hard not to even let any water get into the storm sewer system, except in emergencies. So you'll see these detention basins and other things that replenish the aquifer. And a sewer basically diverts water from the aquifer into the river. So there's another secondary thought, I think, here, but, all right, let's, uh, Mike, you want to leave that part of the discussion, what you guys are thinking?
Yeah, I, I'll open it up to, does anyone have any questions?
I mean, I, I, like others, like the middle one, my only concern, are you taking something away from someone? You're a landowner on Main Street, your property's all in blue, and then tomorrow we're saying, nope, we changed our mind that, you know, that perhaps you're making their property less valuable. And like, do they, does that get advertised? Do they have a say? I guess that's my only concern. So interested if in other towns it has been a, an issue, you kind of change it on people and people get upset or?
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't seen, you know, a lot of these sewer maps were developed back when there was a lot more investment in the systems back in the 60s, 70s, and 80s. I'm not aware, just from my own personal experience, of any major amendment that warranted that. I assume you guys have a public hearing process for map changes or, or no? So there would be, you know, there would be kind of the typical process there.
That would be their recourse.
Um, I, I think, to your point, you know, it certainly could be interpreted as, you know, a thing you're taking away. However, I think the, the intent of, at least from what I heard from PCC, was that we're not taking it away from a building that has it, we're taking it away from undeveloped land that has it, and.
I thought I saw in this package somewhere, like a 60-day, 65-day public comment period? Changes something, I thought somewhere.
So that's, so that's for the P O C D. I wasn't sure for your, for, for WPCA, if someone came, when the, the folks on Oakland Road came in for the map. Came in for the map amendment, was there a public hearing process for that or or not? I mean, for something as major as kind of a re-designation of sewer policies, it probably would make sense to to have a public hearing, even if it's not required. By your, by your statutes.
But we may need to revise a, a policy or something.
And I believe PCC would also have to probably approve that through the. Maybe that triggered the municipal improvement approval for PCC, Michelle?
Well, if if WPCA changes it, it would come to us through our P O C D, right?
Yes, through through P S D amendment, but would it trigger the, is it eight dash twenty-four?
I don't think that would trigger that, no. Not unless you're doing infrastructure.
Not unless you're physically building something.
Can we move on to the next area? I think it's pretty consistent, though. People like the limited sewer service area. Make sure the details actually work.
Yep, yep, certainly. Following the northeastern area, this is Barber Hill, Niederwerfer Road. This is currently zoned for rural residential. There's no sewer lines, but there was kind of a smattering of of blue properties on the map on Vintage Lane. I wasn't sure if that. The septic, okay, so that.
And there's a development up there, you don't see, there's all septic on the.
Okay, got it. This is again, is an area that has a lot of farm fields, undeveloped land. Currently, it's uh, designated with the exception of those. Couple of misdes- misdesignated parcels as a conservation area. Any thoughts on changing this or are we okay with keeping this in as a conservation area?
If I may? With this area here, I I would be in favor of leaving it as a conservation uh, area. What we're working on right now is the ten year plan and we're looking ahead ten years. I don't think we're looking ahead twenty or thirty years, we're looking ahead ten years. So um, trying to address issues that are gonna come up like the next ten years. And there are no real sewer lines that I'm aware of in this area. So I think it would be consistent with leaving it as a conservation area.
Well, Fraser Fur has sewers, right?
Yes, they're just outside of this.
Then there's a few houses like a few feet up from there that, uh, we got some complaints that they were not given the sewer when Fraser Fur went in. I wanna think about some of them.
They're on septic currently, right?
Right, they're on septic and, you know, the last time I talked to one of them, uh, they were losing their septic. But I don't know, that was probably five or six years ago when I had that conversations. So we would maybe wanna think about a little bit of that.
Yep, and and well, that would become a health, like it, when you say lo- losing their septic, was it because of the high water or and their their leaching fields or?
I wish I remembered that a little more detail.
So that would fall into the category if it became a health issue.
Public health purposes.
Correct, then then they'd have the accessibility to go, but until then.
And I guess the other question is, do they have enough land in some of these properties to put the septic further away or something?
I do know Niederwerfer has a lot of drainage problems and some high water.
Engineered system.
So where would the limited area be there?
So so Steve, I think uh, to to your point, that that does fall into, you know, a potential policy of. We may allow it in the green area for public health for existing development. I think it's a a good distinction to make of the any, in those rare cases where you may need to make the exception. It's not to support new development that otherwise may not have been able to go forward. It's to serve existing that are in that predicament where, you know, they're, they have a failing system and and.
So is there any limited in there at all?
Right now, no, because there's no sewer lines.
So let me ask this question. So you have, in this presentation, you have five areas that are being discussed. This is the second of the five. And we have a point of view about the first one. This one, it seems like is a different point of view. Is there any downside in being inconsistent with how we're making that decision? I mean, so we're we're coming up. There's two, two things going on here. One is we're making custom decisions, if you will, based on what's there. And the other, the other side is. We're being inconsistent in how we approach these areas, which, I don't know, in a public hearing could backfire on us.
Well, I think the, the consistency is, in the other area, we're using the existing sewer line as as our guide. So if we applied it to the existing sewer lines in this area, well, there aren't any. So we're being consistent. Existing sewer line.
That's what I needed.
So just by consensus, I think we'd like to leave it where it is, right? Everybody here?
All right, North Central Area, this gets a little bit more complicated. So this is a unique area. We have, it's a rural residential zone.
That's all us.
It's um, several town parks, two golf courses, one golf course, Topstone is listed as a conservation area. Willow Brook, or the former Willow Brook, is listed as sewer. I'm not sure if that whole site is sewered or if um, just portion of it is. And then we have two town parks, both of which are in co- the conservation area. So this, I think, has uh. Two, two questions. One is, is this an area where maybe we wanna look parcel by parcel, see if there's sewer? And take that into consideration as we're developing the policy. Should town parks be in the sewer area? Town obviously controls it, they're not gonna develop it into um, residential development. But should you wanna put in bathrooms at Rice Street, Rice Street Park? Do you want the option to connect into the sewer system? That's another time in the future. So wouldn't it be good policy to have that as sewer service area?
Like Rice Street Park right now has bathrooms, facilities in it, and I would just say, leave that as total conservation if it's town owned, you know?
But are they sewered or are they using a?
They're pretty far away from the road.
I believe Mikey Coven, I I think that's a septic system.
I know there was a septic, years ago, there was some issues, I think it was an old septic tank or.
That new building though, I mean, it's got, got the city water.
We do have sewer going down Rice Street. In front of the property. But I know the building's offset quite a ways.
So I guess we need to develop some more facts here to. Sure. He's gonna use his phone to. Let's uh, let's.
Call a friend?
Nothing to add here. I mean, I just wanna, with you guys, need to hear more before making a decision.
Yeah, and to that point, um, there's been some scuttlebutt about putting in facilities at the fairgrounds. So I don't know, who knows about that, but that might wanna, that may play into what we do here. So I just throw that out there.
Anybody else comment or anything?
I don't necessarily see a negative implication if we make it. Sewers accessible, town parks. So I wouldn't be against it. I'm just kinda looking at it as an added cost, that's all.
The added cost of.
Running a sewer line versus an individual septic system, uh, because of the possible. Length of where that existing sewer might be and where you might want to have the actual facilities. It might be cost prohibitive.
Turn your question around. If we designate something as a sewer service area and someone decides to build a restroom in this park. Are they required to connect to the sewer? Or can we make it optional or they do it based on the cost and?
That's where the policy would need to be consistent. I would say if it was a private development, you would probably want them to connect. And you probably as a town would wanna do the same thing as a, that you would require a private developer to do. You don't have to, but. As as optics, since we're doing a non partial based approach, the other option is you take a buffer. And say, you know, the area of Rice Street Park within X feet of the existing sewer line or the fairgrounds of the next few of the sewer line is in the sewer area. But not require kind of the further away areas to to be.
I like the sound of that. It really answers Bart's question and uh.
Keeps it flexible.
Gives us the option of connecting.
If Willow Brook were to be sold off and tried to be developed, it's already in a sewer area, right? So it's a, it would be.
We don't know is whether they're connected. Do you know where the Willow Brook is? There, there, you know, the clubhouse has got sewer.
Clubhouse at Willow Brook, is it?
And that's showing to be sewered, that property, right, cause it's blue.
So if, so if a housing development or something were to come up behind that, it would be able to connect back in?
The way it currently exists on the map.
So would we rather, I mean, if the, if the clubhouse, um, and and I'm. I've walked that property a couple of years ago or several years ago, but I don't remember exactly how the clubhouse sits. Uh, if the clubhouse is sewered, but we don't want sewer going in to any new development further back. We could do the same thing and making that a limited service area.
That's an option. I think the, the challenge with this one versus Main Street is that it then becomes kind of an island unto itself. Where all this area surrounding it would be sewed and sewer service area and then it's kind of a little donut hole.
Yeah, because you have access, you have access to that property from like four streets that all have sewer.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Leave it as it is?
And Topstone is not, is listed as conservation, so presumably they have just onsite septic for their clubhouse.
So just the, the area ins, the island area inside to the left of Topstone. And to the, uh, above Rice Street Park. Can you uh, just tell me about that?
Sure, that is zoned.
I'm just wondering why it's carved out like that.
Yeah, it's a higher density residential zone, so I think it's R thirty or R twenty. Or eight twenty, sorry.
And is that currently, it appears to be conservation area.
So this area is actually brown. So this is one of the few areas where you have higher density zones, but no sewer currently. So that was designated as a future sewer area here. And actually, the development above it, that is zoned rural residential, I think, has slightly bigger lots. Is also a future sewer area as well.
Okay, I just wanted to understand that. So hypothetically, if we made. Everything but Topstone, which is conservation area now. Sewers, if we turned it all blue, would that be a bad thing? For everything that we just talked about? The fairgrounds, Rice Street Park, Willow Brook. And um, the high density area that is a future sewer connection.
Would you do blue for parks or would you do the yellow?
Do an offset on the parks, like two hundred feet or a hundred feet in on the parks?
Yeah, okay, I, I hear that and that was mentioned.
Fairgrounds, the Rice Street Park, have an offset. Keep Willow Brook as it is and then keep Topstone as it is.
And then these areas.
And there, you already show those as to be sewed, correct already, right?
Yes, we have the area, the higher density zone, but we also have some properties that are rural residential. That are also listed as future sewer areas that, I think Bart is suggesting, we keep those in the sewer area as well.
Yeah, I would just maybe clean up our map, so it's easier to distinguish if. If this is gonna be used in any possible future public hearing, notice period, that type of stuff.
Where's the school and all this?
Page sixteen?
Eli Terry?
So when we redid Eli Terry, uh, we asked the people along there, uh, whether they wanted a sewer line. And everybody was sort of against it, including the school board. But uh, we could have put a sewer line on the school property uh, to serve those houses and did not.
The school is connected though, right? The new schools?
I believe so, yeah.
How could a school not be connected?
Pretty sure they're connected, yeah.
Michelle, Eli Terry connected sewer line?
Where does it all go?
Very special children.
The water fountains don't work.
So those residents didn't want the sewer lines coming up to there? Apparently not.
Well, they all were, you know, would have been facing the cost and it didn't go very far, the suggestion, because. The school and redesigning the property for the school didn't want the line going through their property either, so kinda.
Some sewers added to Miller Road and I think the cost was like forty thousand dollars per house. If I remember what I read correctly.
I'm gonna ask, what is the average cost for a resident to have it?
To connect? The average cost for a resident to connect?
It's based on a formula, which is the construction cost, but it's been quite high, so.
Ballpark.
It was more, um, it was about the cost of the septic. It's been twenty to thirty thousand dollars. Typically, from what we've seen, when Griffin Road petitioned WPCA for sewers, um. We worked up a cost estimate and then, once they got the number, they were happy with their septic tanks.
So where are we leaving this?
Sound like a blend of approaches?
Setback on parks.
Keep Willow Brook in, keep Topstone out, put the existing developments off of Rice Street in, right?
Any other comments on this?
So now I'll talk about the central areas. This is very much like Main Street where we have sewer lines on um. Park, uh, Pierce Foster, West and Strong, with the, uh, some gaps on Strong Road and West Road. But for the most part, there is sewer on your existing roadways in this area. It is also zoned rural residential. And this is also an area with some larger lots that extend pretty far back from the roadway. A lot of that area is wetlands, um, so there's some development constraints anyway. Uh, but this is, I think, a similar conversation to the Main Street area where do we want to establish an offset on the existing sewer lines? And then say interior developments have to have um, septic systems. Or do we want to allow for interior lot development and make these areas blue? That are currently surrounded by sewer on both sides.
I'm just gonna make a comment, there's gonna be very little interior development. I mean, it is a truly wet. It shouldn't be a, um, a lot of interior development.
But from a, uh, comment of consistency before, I think this is a good example of, for Main Street, the policy. The consensus was offset from existing. So is that an approach that you wanna take here as well?
Yeah, when you look at page sixteen and the sewer line trunks that are on page sixteen in this central area. I I think it would be good to have those sewer lines uh, being a limited sewer service area. And if you're familiar with that area at all, there, there is a heck of a lot of wetlands over there. I think that'd be the best approach.
So basically, we're saying, treat it the same as Main Street?
Yeah, so limited areas off of the sewer trunks or.
We're not taking anything away.
There's no cellar holes over there.
We're not taking anything away from anybody. We're not taking anything away from anybody.
Last area, which is a little bit unique in that this is an area that has higher density zoning. So on Route five north, so this is Route five north of the Scantic River, not a large area, but a handful of properties. And the properties on Route five are zoned eight twenty, so twenty thousand square foot minimum lot size. It's also in your overlay zone that you recently established, which identifies it as more of a transitional area, um, noting the rural characteristics. So if we were to use our formula that we've, um, done, that we laid out in the beginning. This would, the density justifies sewer, but we also recognize that geography plays an important role here in this case. For the cost of getting sewer over the Scantic River, it presumably have to put in its own pump station to to get it up and over. And the overlay zone appears to be more rural, I guess, I suppose than the underlying eight twenty zone. And so the thoughts on this is, does this become then the exception where right now it's identified as a conservation area? Do we keep it there? Uh, and then just kinda write some some text around the rationale for why? Or, um, do we wanna leave the option open, knowing that it's likely gonna be cost prohibitive for the the property owner anyway?
I just have a question on this. Is there any possible access for these lots to pick up sewer if there's any available in East Windsor?
I think the facility is too far away. It's, um, it's a little further north up the river.
Yeah.
I don't think they have sewer on Route five that far down, um, but I'm not a hundred percent sure on their sewer mess.
Yeah, so I I just wanted to explore that. It doesn't look like we have a sewer line that's really close to there. And as far as crossing the Scantic.
Up to Main Street and Sullivan and then that's it.
We're, it is a conservation area now and like I said before, this is a ten year plan. So, um, we haven't heard any inklings of, uh, a reason to put it in this plan. So I I'm in favor of leaving it as a conservation area.
Any other comments?
I agree with that.
Everybody's got it, yeah. Leave it as it is, um, if they hang up on us and wanna change, we can always change, right?
So public hearings are for, right?
Yeah.
All right, any any last thoughts or comments on the sewer? We have some directions, but I think the next step would be, I can create a little bit more detailed of a map. Share it with you all and share it with Tony and you can share it with WPCA. To kinda get the conversation, you know, keep it going and then we'll see, uh, where we land. Obviously the WPCA will have their own process for, you know, changing the map.
Let me ask, what is the role of planning and zoning in terms of official decisions? Do we have any or are we basically giving them our guidance here and then they go off and do any of the official business?
Yep, so WPCA has to adopt the map. I think the, you as the commission would need to approve sewer line extensions through your, you know, your referral process. So having you guys be in lockstep in terms of policy should make that process easier going forward. Um, but ultimately it comes down to infrastructure should support your land use policy. And, um, rather than having an ad hoc, you know, residents request me, or you know, residents want to connect to the sewer system, they request it. This, I think, makes it a little bit more defensible from WPCA's part that says, we have a map, it's generalized, it's based on land use policy rather than. You know, resident X, Y, or Z petitioning. Um, I can't speak for them, but I think that that may be a benefit of the process is it'll make your work easier administratively and hopefully clearer for property owners as well.
So this was thought occurred to me. Let them, working with you, develop the map. Approve it, send it to us and we'll write a letter back saying this is consistent with our, um, development plans or something like that and send it back to them. Just just to give them the the input that they need from us. So in fact, I guess they they don't really have to send it to us, we could send it to them as a support of their public hearing.
And and your P O C D map, or your P O C D has to include a sewer map as well. So the intent of my work be to develop that in tandem and I'll work with Michelle and and try to add, will be the person to. Take the the map through the, uh, adoption process for WPCA. What I've done for other communities where they've made some changes, or they didn't have a sewer map when the new requirement for the P O C Ds came is that you have. You have kind of the existing policy in there or the existing map in there, like let's say WPCA can't finalize the map until after your plan is adopted. We go in with the existing WPCA map, we have maybe a desirable future sewer policies map that accompanies it. And then once the sewer plan is revised or adopted by WPCA, that then becomes a P O C D amendment that happens at a later date. I've seen that happen before. So we're not in a rush.
Yeah, just just reading the statute here, uh, eight dash twenty-three and it says after July of twenty fifteen. The P O C D shall identify the general location and extent. All right, so we, there is a little wiggle room in there. Uh, one, any areas served by existing sewerage systems, we think we got that. Number two, areas where sewage systems are planned. Planned is sort of an interesting one, but I think this could be again the yellow category. And areas where sewers are to be avoided. And I think that that might fall into the green, so I don't think. Given our timeframe for P O C D and WPCA's timeframe for action, I think we can have a little sort of freedom and liberty within that. Cause it's general areas and extent and I think with our conversation here today, we're kinda moving in that direction and I think we got a little bit over.
Yep.
So maybe what we do is we take the map that you develop with them. We put it in the draft of the of the P O C D. Goes out the comments, sixty-five day comment period. If there are changes needed, we take care of that at the end of the comment period. So it goes in, I'd like it to go in.
Yours almost becomes more of a sewer policies map in the P O C D versus the town's official WPCA map. So I think we look at them, they're they're related, but they can be somewhat separate for the process. But to your point, I think it the the comment period is a a good time to say, hey, we're thinking of making some changes. This is the time for you to speak on, you know, the sewer policies plan. WPCA would then have to take that next step, um, and officially adopt the map. But, um, yeah, there there's certainly parallel processes, but we don't have to rush one to meet the timeline of the other, I guess, is is the.
Is, does there need to be any other discussion regarding like the limited sewer service areas, the depth that they would go? Like Kevin had suggested a hundred and fifty feet, um, I had originally thrown out like two fifty or two hundred. I don't know if that needs to be discussed anymore or.
Well, that's the limit you were talking about.
Well, we can take a look and see on Main Street, for example, let's just see if two fifty gets all the houses, for example. I think we're trying to get existing structures there.
Right.
I think, you know, when you look at your zoning on Main Street, typical depth is two hundred feet. So if you're talking about frontage lots, then maybe you say two hundred feet is your depth, that's your zoning depth, right? But we can take a quick G I S, look at it and.
And then the the existing rear lots that are service, they'll just be grandfathered.
Yeah, so but let us take a look at it and come back with a number.
Cool, thank you.
Let us, right Tony?
So so what's the next step then? You're gonna generate generate revised maps?
So yeah, based on our conversation today, we seem to be okay with this as a starting point. And then these other areas will get filled in based on the guidance that I received tonight. That I think will be subject to, you know, staff review, uh, shared with you all for comment. And then I kinda see two processes. One is we we can revise that map based on any any comments. That then goes into P O C D. Then I give the G I S files to that or town staff who can then shepherd it through any final changes. You know, maybe it's, oh, we gotta, you know, make this, add this property in or make it make it align nicely. With with your other layers. So I see that as the near term goal is sewer policies for the P O C D. Which can then lead you to whatever changes to your WPCA map you wanna make. I may not be working for South Windsor at that time, so I wanna make sure we have kinda contingency plans.
Yeah, we can get the map created.
Well, our. We have a workshop coming up on the thirtieth, which I doubt if you'd have your map ready by by then, although we might show them something.
Yep.
Okay, and then on February twentieth, um, will we be able to have that map, um, pretty much ready?
Yep, and and the sewer plan or the sewer policies map and the future land use map are really interrelated. Because your your density is driven by availability of availability of infrastructure. And so now that we have a general idea of what our sewer plan is. For February twentieth, I'll also have a future land use plan map to share with you all that will have aligned with those sewer policies. So we may, it'll have like residential densities like you had in your last plan, we may have rural, you know, medium or rural, low, medium. Rural would obviously be areas that are in your sewer conservation areas, so they're kind of in line with.
So anybody else have any comments related to this subject? In that case, um, WPCA, it's a public meeting, you're welcome to stay, you may find this next discussion interesting, but on the other hand, our joint meeting is.
Do I have a motion to adjourn the?
Motion to adjourn the WPCA meeting.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
Meeting adjourned.
Yes.
All right, Glenn, do you wanna, can you take a seat?
Yeah.
Four ninety should be pretty quick, right?
By the way, be be sure to get people to come to our workshop on the thirtieth. They tend to be very poorly attended and, uh, that's a detriment to the value of the plan, so.
Compared to the overall population of South Windsor.
I think the last time we did this, we needed a lot of people. Okay. Thank you, uh. Hello, WPCA members, I happen to still be a member of that.
So did you vote to dismiss?
So you got one foot out the door, Steve, or what?
I was the chair of that until first meeting, January second.
So this then, this then segues into kind of our other part of the growth management strategies. How do we align our conservation policies to discourage development where, um, we have sensitive natural resources, farmland, forest? PA four ninety is one of the, um, recommendations we're making as part of this plan. So the state essentially, uh, has established this program. It allows farms, forests, and open space, which is a local program, to be assessed based on use rather than market value. So provides a financial incentive for property owners of farm, forest, or other open space to maintain their land as undeveloped. And it does not offer the permanent protection of a purchase of development rights program or conservation easement. Um, but it does provide a temporary incentive and may buy you time until more permanent protective measures can be put in place. And it's a, um, policy that has a a ten year lifespan, so if you enroll in the program. You have a ten year tax assessment relief. And should you develop or sell that property within those first ten years, there's an ability for the municipality to recapture. Those tax dollars that, um, it essentially forewent.
Yes, sure. So that the, if a property owner was to own the property for sixty years, you enroll the first time and you get that tax reduction for the entire period. If you sell in the first ten after the designation, there's a declining recapture. It's ten percent in the first year, nine percent in the second, eight, and after ten years, there then is no penalty. So it makes undeveloped land less expensive to own. And that was the purpose for the legislature to establish this program is that land wouldn't be forced into development because people couldn't afford the taxes for farmland or or other properties. So it it, I think as Pat said, it kinda buys time, if you will, um, and keeps undeveloped land longer.
So there's two, there's three categories of PA four ninety that are established by state statute. The farm and forest assessment are both defined by the state. Your properties, uh, who meet the criteria are enrolled automatically by your assessor. Every municipality in Connecticut participates. The farm assessment has to be for a commercial farm, having some level of income from the farm, not just, you know, my backyard where I have my my raised bed gardens. Forest assessment similarly is defined by state statute, so it must be at least twenty-five acres and have an approved forest management plan. And state statute does allow municipalities to create their own category that doesn't fall into the farm and forest category. And currently, currently, South Windsor does not participate in this program. So we think that this is an opportunity to create our own local category that aligns with our, um, conservation priorities. For example, maybe it's a forest less than twenty-five acres or, um. Let's say oversized residential lots that they could subdivide it. So the P O C D can help establish the criteria that then can lead the town council to adopt an official open space, uh, category for PA four ninety. And this is just from the statutes on some of the criteria that can be used for, um, establishing that local option. So obviously conservation of natural resources, um, preserving, you know, the, um, undeveloped. Undeveloped state has value to adjacent property owners, historic sites, um, public recreation, all things that can be considered. So the important part of the plan is to establish criteria. So we had previously discussed residentially zoned properties above a certain size. That maybe meet some of these natural resource characteristics would qualify for the open space assessment.
So if we look at some of those properties on Main Street. Uh, a resident could say, well, everything past three hundred feet from the road is a PA four ninety if the town would allow that.
So that's certainly, so if we look at existing PA four ninety in South Windsor, which is the neon green, I believe they have, we have some wetlands overlaid on top of that. Most of the agricultural land on Main Street currently is enrolled in the program. And this assumes that they are producing farm income. So this is farms that are used as a business as opposed to hobby farms. There may be some cases where you do have a property that's not producing farm income that may not be enrolled in the program. That may meet other criteria. So for example, maybe it's a, maybe we have a ten acre.
Excuse me, I'd like to have a five minute break so I can talk to, uh, Peter Malley before I leave, Peter.
Yeah, okay.
Five minute break?
I need Michelle.
I need Michelle, please.
Perfect time for a break then.
Yeah.
You wanna use the restroom?
Go to a septic tank or just sewer?
Okay.
So just on the wetlands, can that be for, uh, PA four four ninety land?
Only if you establish a local program. So right now wetlands can only be in four ninety in South Windsor if it's part of a farm or a forest of twenty-five acres or more. You may have a lower assessment on wetlands through your assessor's office anyway, but it may not be the same as like a four ninety, um, assessment.
How, can you quantify that for me?
I can look up, um, I believe the state publishes recommended assessed values per acre.
For wetlands and for four ninety or are they similar?
Uh, I believe it's for different, um, yeah, they have different categories, so it'll be like different agricultural types, forest, wetlands. So we can look that up and see what the latest values are.
So a quick question, do you know what the forest management plan, what that in, what does that entail?
Certified forester to visit the property and produce a plan regarding how woodlot management, that, you know, that some of the trees would be harvested over time to make a healthy forest, et cetera. So my father-in-law participates in the program, he has a forest management plan, doesn't do anything with it. So there's, he have it to get the designation, but he doesn't have the his property. Professionally woodlot.
I just, we're not gonna be on Facebook right now, cause there's a council has to take our Facebook piece. Sorry, guys, we're not gonna be filmed.
Geez, that's too bad.
I'm like, I'm sure the commission will be okay with it.
Oh, yeah, we're fine.
They started at seven, right?
Yep.
Yep.
So if if on sections of.
So we're back in meeting, you're okay.
So the, the, uh, there are sections of in between, I'll call it, down in the meadows for, in South Windsor Meadows. Where over time, as the hedge, we call them the hedgerows have become overgrown, right? And they can't, it's non-tillable soil anymore, they're becoming forest area, right? So would those, although they're also wet and they have, and it's protection of the stream bed, natural streams, that would fall under the PA four ninety?
It it does, as as Pat indicated, there's really sort of three components, there's actually four components to the program, but marine land doesn't apply to us, okay? So the basic, uh, options that are available for South Windsor are farm, is as Pat indicated, the state designated program. You have to show some farm income. I do know some towns in Connecticut that people own property, but they're not farmers, but they lease it to farmers. They're in, able to show farm income and now they get the farm assessment. Under the farm program, the state issues annually estimates of, um, tillable A, tillable B, tillable C. Woodland, they call it, which is land associated with the farm that's not being farmed because it's not particularly arable soils and other stuff like that. I believe wetland is included within that. So the assessor would look at the parcel, the different designations allocated accordingly. Um, and the taxes are much less than they would be for a residential lot or for even for excess land for a residential parcel. So it's a significant benefit to the property owner and particularly farmers. I I honestly don't know if farmers could, or maybe tobacco farmers could have, but even they took advantage of it. But it's a tremendous economic benefit to a farmer. And then for a large landowner, twenty five plus acres, even though it does cost a little bit of money to get the the woodlot management plan. Um, it's still a significant tax savings compared to the other, uh, options.
So what happens if, um, the, he's legitimately a farmer when they apply for the, for the status? And then for some reason they stop farming it? The clawback is only for selling, right?
The clawback is on sale. The new property owner could apply for the designation again and be granted it and be off and running again for new and a fresh ten year process. So the, uh, my understanding is that the assessment reduction, uh, goes to the current owner, uh, for their ownership, should there be a change in ownership. And I think this original public act was adopted in nineteen sixty four, it was actually nineteen sixty four Public Act four ninety, but it's just sort of retained that name over the years. Um, and so there has been some, you know, turnover and stuff at that time and properties have exited and then been re-enrolled in the program, et cetera.
So now let's say, uh, I have a nice piece of farmland and, you know, I'm in my seventies and I'm still farming it. And then it gets to the point where I can't farm it anymore. But I've got this designation, does the designation stay until I sell the property?
That's a good question, I think I'd want to have a conversation with the assessor on that.
Yeah, I think you have to be actively farming it, they look for documentation of that.
Horrific.
As a farm, yeah, that's part of the auditing of it, pretty sure.
What what do they define for like these things that the farm has to be able to do?
It's very specific, you'd have to, the assessor has very specific. I just know because somebody's trying to get it and, you know, it's got to file by October first and it has to meet certain criteria and things like that. So I have a feeling that the assessor is checking on it.
I've not, I've not heard screaming over the years that a parcel was removed from the farm assessment. So it may happen, but I I don't, again, it's.
And the state doesn't make up for that lost income, right? That's just something the town?
No, and I think the way some towns have thought about this historically is that, um, what would be the cost of acquiring the property? In a sense, all property owners in town benefit from the fact that we have farmland and undeveloped land and scenic views. So when you spread the reduction for those properties that Pat was showing on the map across all property owners, it doesn't amount to a lot for everybody. And it's sort of part of our character, et cetera. I think the thing that, oh, the toilet word. I think the things that Pat and I wanted to have a conversation with you about, I think open space assessment is terribly worded. It's really something that you should consider as a local option. So should I own property in South Windsor, twenty four acres of woodland? I'm I'm paying the assessment for a residential lot, excess land, and the taxes could be robust. On the other hand, if I could enroll that into PA four ninety program, my taxes would be much less and I'm more likely to keep that land. Longer in an undeveloped state, people sort of like that own land.
So so the state, the twenty five plus acres, say like for the forest assessment, it doesn't, you could ask for, somebody could say, hey, I only have fifteen acres. No, it's twenty.
It's in, it's written in the statute. If you had three parcels, you had fifteen acres, nine acres and two acres, your total is twenty six, all three parcels can now be in the program. So it's one landowner, but your assemblage of land has to be at least twenty.
And they don't have to be contiguous?
All right.
Actually, they do not. They can be split by roads, they can actually be in different parts of the community. Again, uh, I think, uh, if you go back to the one slide, Pat, uh, if you look at here from, uh, Connecticut General Statute twelve dash one oh seven, which is what explains this program. And item number two here, the state legislature found it's in the public interest to prevent the forced conversion. Of farmland, forest land, open space land and maritime heritage land to more intensive uses as the result of economic pressures caused by the assessment thereof for purposes of property taxation. And so that's why the state offered this program and it became adopted. Farm and forest is is really not an option for the town to say yea or nay, the state established this. And then the question is again, the sort of local option.
So one local option would be to change twenty five to fifteen or something like that?
Or to say, you know, of, or to not require a forest management plan or, um, I mean, there are towns around the state that handle this differently. And and the town that I used to be the town planner in, their policy was any land that you own, which is in excess of two times the minimum lot size. Okay, so in a one acre zone, if you had more than two acres, that land was in the PA four ninety program. And their philosophy in that scenario was you get a sort of a free cut or you might have some excess land with your property. But you're not going to be subdividing off the rest of it because we're going to make it less expensive to home.
So you're probably gonna get some of this in your, the rest of your presentation, why don't we?
Sure, so this map here just shows our existing PA four ninety land, um, most of it is farmland in South Windsor. Main Street corridor being where the bulk of that land is located. There are a handful of parcels with the, um, forest designation, but, um, largely this is farmland. Michelle had, uh, worked with the town assessor and GIS staff to do some, um, mapping. Looking at, right now, this is just vacant residential land that doesn't have PA four ninety status. And so we have different size categories just to get a sense of, um, how much vacant land is out there. So yellow is five acres or less, orange is five to ten acres and red is ten plus acres and, um.
I would just caveat, we took out a lot of land that we knew wasn't developable out of the scenario. Because the idea was, you know, what kind of good land is out there if you were to offer this, it might come out.
Could I just ask about the Carino property?
Yeah, I'm not sure why that didn't, I think they should have gotten picked up, it's a four ninety.
Which is the property right above the orange property on the right.
Yeah, that that I noticed was not picked up, I think it's four ninety. The one right.
Up, up.
Yeah, that's like the most developable.
Big white block above the orange shop. Joe Joe Carino?
Oh, yeah, okay, yep.
So, you know, there are, if we were to use the, the vacant land category here, we do have some properties that would qualify. I think, um, to to Glenn's point, another option would be looking at what we call oversized lots. So parcels that have a single family residence that may be in excess of two times the minimum lot size. We also maybe want to consider them as well, knowing that they are large enough to potentially be subdivided. Um, and so that could be an exercise that we can rerun the map for for the February meeting. And so the goal of the P O C D is to kind of establish the criteria that then informs the future policy that gets adopted by the town council. It doesn't need to be so specific, we can, we can keep it somewhat flexible if we think there's conversations that need to be had. But I think establishing some minimum parameters would be beneficial for for our process.
Statute since essentially says that a town cannot offer the local option unless it's recommended in the P O C D and it's adopted by the legislative body. So the town can say, we want to do this, but if it's not in the P O C D, you gotta go back and revisit. If the, it's in the P O C D, but the council doesn't adopt it, that can't happen either. So the question in a sense is, I think as Bart indicated, over the next ten years, which is our real horizon timeline, is this something that we may want to consider? So the P O C D could be a general recommendation for the town to explore, or we could actually get a little bit more specific and say, you know, some size parameters for the parcel. Or, you know, somebody, you know, agrees not to develop the parcel for the ten year horizon or something. And the policy could be different, uh, and so we could be general or specific, but the conversation can proceed unless we as the planning and zoning commissioner of the P O C D committee take that for first step, our next step.
Just a quick question, just for education purposes, so if we do come up with some limits for acreage and lots, like you said, if it's, you know, twice the size of. And we present that in our P O C D, we take our P O C D, present it to the state legislator, let the, who, so who makes the decision? Who gives us the thumbs up?
The council would need to.
Adopt a program.
Town council.
I mean, I'm just being silly for a second.
Level.
State has done their work, they've enabled this.
Okay.
If your policy was that anybody in town with with the last name beginning with the letter P. If that's your PA four ninety policy, the council's got to approve it, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, but okay. That's the policy, it's recommended in the plan, the council adopted it. So it's not quite that free form, but the idea would be, again, it's it's a thought on program as to how to preserve the characteristics of South Windsor. Uh, we think are important, um, and to enable more time or a longer period that we might be able to assemble the activities necessary to preserve the land. Or or forced all development or sort of other things like that.
What would be, what would be a reason we wouldn't want to pursue this? I don't see a downside.
Depending on how many people or what our policy would be, um, you know, there is some reduction in in tax revenue as a result of this. So the tax burden would then be a little bit more for all of the other properties in town that are not getting that. So, you know, some people would say, well, I told all my taxes going up, et cetera. But I think realistically, if if people care about South Windsor and sort of the preservation of land, et cetera, um, again, it's not a significant amount in the calculations I've seen in the past. And people might say, you know, that's, gives us an opportunity or a longer period of time to to work to be able to preserve the property or create open space connections and.
And I think another point here that has been driving the conversation is your impact to your school system. That's clearly been one of the drivers of the conversation of, you know, one way of helping manage enrollment is to enable or enact policies that discourage residential development to some extent. And so PA four ninety is a program, and and the way I'm looking at it is certainly because the conservation component has values or value of why we'd want to do it. But I think there's also a real fiscal, um, impact where if that property were to be developed with a single family home, it would probably be a a fiscal negative. So any, any tax money you're foregoing, um, isn't this, is, uh, less costly than if the lot were developed into a single family home and you'd have to pay for, you know, school age children. And it exacerbates, um, some of the the enrollment challenges that you currently experience.
It might give some flexibility to in four ninety, that's farmland comes off of, you know, farmers aren't farming it anymore, but still want to keep it out of development, giving them another opportunity. Because that might be something we see as time goes on in the future.
It's tillable soil and it's.
Yeah, they're just not farming it any longer, but they want to keep it, you know, out of development.
What if the, um, I mean, I could imagine putting some of that into solar farms, okay? Is that something that?
You would, I believe you would lose your PA four ninety exemption at that time, it essentially becomes a sort of a commercial use of municipal property. And so at that point in time, taxes are being paid on the solar farm.
But I mean, there's actually very recently in the news, uh, I forget which town, was it Glastonbury? Or they've got, they've actually literally got sheep mowing the lawn, so it's it's supporting sheep and a solar farm.
Yeah, but I think again, it's the commercial aspect of it, so I don't think any of that income goes to a Schedule F, which is my understanding of the threshold that the assessor uses.
So, um, let's say we set, uh, five acres or any other parameter and the town council comes around and says, well, we don't like five, but we like ten. But we've got the five acres in the P O C D.
I think that Pat and I would work together with the assessor and and Michelle to develop some somewhat flexible language, if you will. That would suggest, if the commission is so inclined, your support for the concept of a local option. And that it might include parcels of five acres or more. Another language which, uh, could support the council in their efforts to to find an appropriate, you know, program for South Windsor. So I I think the job is ours, I think, to set the stage for this conversation. And we would not, I don't think, want it to be so specific that there's one flavor only. We would like to offer something that could allow the town to advance this conversation over the next couple of years and perhaps get a program in place.
It sounds like the consensus of this commission is to recommend that we establish a PA four ninety option. We we talked about at the last meeting, limiting it to residential zones. Is that, we've been limiting it to residential zones or do you want to discuss that? And then the last is is size, and I think those are really the three, the three questions. And the size, I think, is the one where maybe we maintain a level of flexibility where you maybe have a recommendation as a land use board. But understand that the council may need to make some changes.
So, um, um.
So we do have some parcels on, say Sullivan Avenue that are, they're tillable soil, they're being farmed and they're in the industrial.
There's one that's in the four ninety already.
Oh, there is.
Cross from Kennedy Road.
Okay, that's the one, yeah, that's one of them I was talking about.
In Windsor, for example, on Day Hill Road for, uh, property being farmed there for many, many years. And that is eligible because it's being farmed and it meets the farm criteria. The local option, I think what Pat's suggesting is on the local option, we might say, you know, uh, if residential development is our primary focus and the primary growth pressure. We might welcome commercial and economic, industrial development as economic development for the town and we wouldn't want to prevent that or deter that, so.
So if somebody had a big fifty two or fifty seven acre area and a farmer said, I want to lease that piece of land. And it's in the industrial.
Leased it to.
And lease it to farm, then the landowner could apply for the four ninety.
I think that's what happened fairly recently on that piece on Sullivan Avenue, last couple of years.
That is my understanding.
So so this is the quantifiable amount of four ninety availability, what we're looking at here?
That's what exists today.
So if I'm the town council, I mean, my thought process would be, yep, looks great, sounds great. Can you project for me what the tax impact could be? Is there a way to do that and is there a way to do that looking at different thresholds like five acres, ten, you know, the the things that these guys were talking about? Would that matter?
I think, um, I might suggest that that analysis happen as the town council now is picking up and rolling with it. Because the values are going to change over time and some of the situations that that may come up may also change over time. So I think we can set the stage for it, explain maybe the number of parcels in town and different acreages. That's data which we can pull out of the GIS, not instantaneously, but quickly. But the actual, uh, economic or other impact would depend on, you know, the dollar values in the specific year that it was being done.
Just like a green piece in the middle of the wetlands there, it's got a different value than a green piece not in the wildland, right? I mean, you're going to run into that scenario all all over again, the different, you know, if you take every ten acre piece in town. The different, you know, if you take every ten acre piece in town, some are gonna be wet, some aren't. So it's gonna be a lot of different things you definitely look at.
Yeah, but I, you know, s- still, I.
But you can, but it's still something that you could get.
Way to spitball it, you know?
Yeah, though we're gonna get some data, sure.
I I understand the local option and how taxes would be assessed based on blah blah. But what's the state, how does the state give the property owner a break?
The state, the state does, the state just, um statutes are enabling legislation. And so the state legislature adopted a program that says, we're concerned that land is being forced into development because of taxes. So we, the state, now say, hey, farmers, you get this break. Hey, people owning twenty-five acres or more in woodlot, you get this break.
Hey, town, give them this break, but the rate comes from the town.
The state does not reimburse the towns or anything else like that.
It's just their recommendation.
To help communities manage the pace of growth.
I just wonder where the money came from.
The state's requirement is twenty-five acres minimum. Twenty-five acres for the forest designation, yes. Farm can be.
Well, we can change that to five.
Ten acres for farm? Oh, I thought it was income.
Well, you have to, it has to be a real farm.
Right, right.
But there's an acreage requirement as well, too.
I mean, for the towns that have adopted this.
It's also something for farm classification, two different.
Yeah, so for the towns that have adopted this would have been, I I I guess the outcome. Um like again, talking about tax, I know it's not gonna all gonna be the same. I mean, there's different types of of land that every town has. But what has been the general outcome if we're really curious about um, you know, the repercussions of adopting this if the town council were to? Like, do you know the amount of towns that have, you know, their their legislative body, the council, adopting this?
Don't know the, I don't, I don't know if that number exists. I've not seen that number in print anywhere. I do know that there are diversity of approaches around the state on this. I know one municipality along the Long Island shore. Granted it to a specific property. So it was a yacht club and they realized waterfront property, the yacht club is not gonna be able to survive economically. If in fact the property's worth ten million dollars. So they gave them a tax break for community amenity by a non-public entity. Now, you might say to yourself, well, why would the town have done that? But in a sense, part of its quality of life and other stuff. So a lot of different ways that the program could be used, and I think if you think about it as a local option, what what works for South Windsor. And I think as Pat indicated, sort of managing growth, particularly with the school population and other issues we're we're facing. Could be a good starting point for that conversation.
What the impact is gonna be adding all those students compared to what the tax loss is gonna be too, right? I mean, there could be some.
Well, the town's still gonna get its taxes. It's just some people are gonna pay a little bit more and some other people might be paying a fair amount.
So I think what we need to come out of this meeting with is what parameters do we want to allow? In our version and uh. I mean, obviously, changing acre limits is pretty easy. I don't know if there are other parameters or other guidance that we might wanna include.
I think I've I've got a a sense from the conversation so far that I think the commission is sort of favorably inclined to considering this. For for recommendation. Um I think if you'll allow us to put some parameters down onto a piece of paper that would be into the P O C D. You'll get a chance to see that and say, okay, I like that, I don't like that, whatever, and we can tweak it as we go. So I don't think you have to make the final decision here today. Um I've taken some notes here for things that you might want for additional information. So let us put it together and come back.
Kevin, your honor.
Yeah, quick question. So the the town you came from, where you were a town planner and they took. And had to be double the size of the existing lot. So let's just say if somebody has, they have three acres. And they have one acre lot that they keep growing and the rest they just leave fallow. It's not being filled and there's no income on it. That's how, that's the plan that you guys had in place, correct?
The basic idea was, and this is the time where the the town was one of the fastest growing towns in the state of Connecticut. But they it had the policy in place since late sixties. But it was just their desire to try to moderate growth rather than force people into development.
I, you know, I just, and I say it all the time, it's 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 easier to grow houses than it is to grow crops. So there are, there are parcels where, say, there's three acres that are right on a road and. Person has a beautiful home, but, you know, they're gonna die someday and it's gonna get left to their kids and they're gonna go. There's two lots right there, bang, you know, but if you make it attractive, um I'm I'm kinda into that too.
Would we want to limit it to developable?
Yeah.
Land, I mean.
That.
If the, if the other two acres is all.
Wetlands.
Yeah, and I think the valuations, maybe we can get some of that from the assessor as well. There's different levels of valuation. So if any of you own property with wetlands on it, it's probably already showing up on your grand list as wetlands and it's it's a low value. I don't think it's quite as low as what PA four ninety might be, but but you're still in the same ballpark. So there's no major change associated with that.
But there's also no risk of it being developed.
Right.
Correct. But in other words, the the fiscal implication of changing wetland or putting it into the four ninety. Doesn't doesn't change that wetland valuation. It's the other land around it, which which.
We have a concept called buildable area on a property.
Do you or?
Our zoning regulations have have a buildable area requirement, okay, for subdividing. Uh so a property might have a lot more buildable area than it's actually built on one of these big properties.
That's what I'm kinda, that was, that's what I was leaning towards.
Yeah, uh so it could somehow limited to buildable area plus appropriate setbacks or something like that.
Yep, got it. Thank you.
So I think we have some guidance to run on about this.
Any other comments from anybody here, any questions?
Just an outline here, uh the same as we had discussed at the last meeting. So just to get everyone to get in the next step, second public workshop scheduled for end of the month, so uh January thirtieth. At the community center and then our next meeting, we'll be looking at some of the loose ends um that we'll need for the draft plan. So the revised sewer policies map, future land use plan, um and just some other final planning graphics that'll be incorporated into the draft. That'll go along with the planning program that we discussed last month. Um with the tentative uh opening up the public comment period at the end of March.
So what's the workshop gonna look like? I mean, you're gonna come in with a presentation, is that how it works?
So it's gonna be like the last one where we're gonna come in with a presentation.
Town, unfortunately for that.
And then the idea is gonna be to have um a couple of breakout groups where we can facilitate some small group discussion. On some key components of the draft plan. Um I haven't quite finalized the exact program, but it may be something like we have a conservation table, sustainability table, development table, infrastructure table. And we have kind of a facilitated discussion around each of those. Here's some of the key development goals from the plan. You know, which ones um do you like, which ones do you not like, things like that.
Are you gonna do it the same way where we gave the public the opportunity to, remember you gave us the uh different?
Money.
Yeah.
We could incorporate the money if you if you thought that was effective.
People can get a kick out of it.
Yeah, where your priorities were and stuff like that. I thought that worked out pretty well.
And that's an important thing to get is, I've I've been to meetings where people support everything or not support everything. But it doesn't help in your guys' decision of, okay, you only have limited bandwidth. What are the top three to five things under each of those buckets that you should focus on over the next one to three years? So that that could be a good way of teasing that out.
Yeah, I mean, the more hands-on, the more interactive, the better. I think a lot of people enjoyed that last time. I I don't think people just wanna sit there and and watch you guys talk to them and it's.
I don't wanna talk.
They wanna, they wanna be part of.
Yeah, exactly.
They wanna contribute and say, we really don't wanna see any more development or we, you know, we wanna see this region, uh you know. What to do with it, so.
We'll try to keep it as interactive as possible.
Absolutely meaningless comment. The P Z C plan referral date is the twenty-sixth, not the twenty-fifth. That's our regular meeting.
Just on our tentative schedule, we have a potential snow date for the January thirtieth meeting. But I don't see any other potential snow dates and I'm I'm just concerned of our timing.
What do you care?
It's all over.
So the big date is is. P Z C plan referral is the only one that's kind of timeline dependent and basically your referral is. You can't adopt the plan until sixty-five days after you refer. So these in-between dates are somewhat flexible if you need to go a week later. And if we have a, if we have a late March snowstorm and.
We have a couple of meetings in March to get it to, if we undo it early.
Yeah, if the plan is ready earlier, we can, we can certainly do it earlier or if you have a snowstorm and you have to, you have to either call a special meeting or wait till your next one. That just puts your adoption, your earliest adoption date back.
Yeah, that too.
At the end of the world.
Very good.
Great.
Right, yeah, thank you, everybody.
Have one more formality, which since you're seated, we can make the motion.
Make it.
You're making a motion to adjourn?